Hello, Mr. Paulson.
Yeah, are you good Maria?
Yeah.
Yeah, Maria, you're really in charge.
Yes, yes, we're ready.
No, it's okay.
Everyone's table.
Ready? Okay. We'd like to welcome everyone to the September sixth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, work session for the Cotwood Heights City Planning Commission. And uh, we acknowledge that we have a, we have a quorum in the room. And are going to excuse Commissioner Shelton and Commissioner Ebbler today. So um, maybe as a first order of business, we'll introduce Dan Holson, our new planning commissioner. And for the record, I had no part of this, but as it turns out, we have known each other for thirty years. And uh, I can speak to both he and his wife's character and contributions to Cotman Heights that. These are um, fantastic human beings and uh, contributed greatly for our community and to our state. And uh, and he tells a pretty good solid dad joke too, so. So, welcome and uh.
Thanks, Dan.
Anything, I don't know if you, you, you have a prepared speech? Or anything you want to share?
I've got an hour.
Whatever you want.
Not really, I just, I'm glad to be here and hopefully I can use some service.
We're excited to have you. I wonder if we should just do a quick round of introductions?
So let's do that, let's do that. Sean, do you want to start?
Yeah, Sean Steinman and uh, top of the world neighborhood. Own local cafe and development company and real estate company.
Okay.
So he owns rooted up the street here.
Really excited. If you haven't been there, you need to go.
Well, not since last Thursday.
It's good, good to hear.
Mike Smith, I live down on Creek Road or just off the Creek Road. Uh, down near the Castle Creek Inn. So I'm no longer the junior member.
Yeah, I was telling him, I was like, we do have another new member.
Somebody's got to be in the cellar.
Hi, I'm Lucy Anderson. I live over by the post office of the twenty thirties in about six eight south. And Lucy is our vice chair of the money commission, which of course you know, Dan is our, Mr. Mills is our chair.
Yeah, well, little known secret is his wife worked for me in my dental office when he was in school.
Yes, when I was doing my undergrad before grad school, so.
And they've had the misfortune of tending our kids and all.
They're all good humans.
Expect you to, you know, deal with any behavior issue.
Well, we know where the bodies are buried conversely, so I think everything will stay.
Oh, yeah. Dan knows too much.
Uh, my name is Jessica Chapel. I'm a structural engineer um, and have a particular interest in seismic safety on the. The seismic safety commission and I've been here almost as long as Dan.
Yes. Good, welcome.
Thank you.
Let's do some staff introduction as well, Maria, if you want to.
Yeah, I'm Maria Devera and I'm deputy city reporter and I'm here for the planning commission meetings. Let me know what you need.
Thanks, thank you.
My name is Ian Harris. I'm an associate planner and I do the sustainability analyzing for the city. I'm, I'm recovering from a cold right now. Usually I'm not masked, but I'm trying to protect everybody, so.
Got Alex over here in the corner.
I'm with the IT department, so I'm just here to.
Uh, they started running smooth and then of course you know me and my friends, your meeting with us, so. Great.
Perfect.
Oh, and I did want to note, it looks like Commissioner Ebbler was able to join the Zoom.
Oh, terrific, okay.
So I wasn't sure if he'd be able to, but Commissioner Ebbler, do you want to introduce yourself as well?
Sure, Jonathan Ebbler and I've spent the last twenty-five years or so in management consulting and also run a aviation company. Um, that we're trying to sell right now out of Atlanta. Um, and I just graduated um, from Utah State with a MBA and I just found out a couple of weeks ago that the case study I wrote when I was in the program just got accepted. Um, into a global case study competition. Um, so we have to go defend it um, in November. Where the Decision Sciences Institute is one of the best operations management kind of organizations, so super excited about that. And I, and just found out also that they're teaching the case study now at Utah State as of the semester.
Wow. Congrats.
Congrats.
Yes. A guy took five.
In November.
Yeah, busy, busy time. Well, welcome aboard.
I can also spend some time in the DC area and watched a, watched some pretty substantial and established neighborhoods. Kind of change and evolve and saw all the people that had involved and the difficulties and the challenges, so. He's provided some insight, not that it is completely analogous to common heights, but. A lot of us have spent a lot of time here and it's nice to have other perspectives, so Commissioner Ebbler has been great for that as well.
They, they like bikes too in that area, so there, there are some commonalities.
And he likes bikes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson, I forgot to give this to you, but there's a copy of the packet.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, of course. All right.
Okay, um, we have just one business item to take care of today. So uh, this should be straightforward, I think, and uh. Involves a dental practice, which is uh, Dr. Paulson's profession, so you know, I, I don't know that it will require any. Particular expertise, but hopefully you don't have any bad blood with the Van Luens, so you know. We'll hear the details of that and I think it's a property that most of us are familiar with, so um. Turn the time over to staff to give us the details.
Great, um, I believe the applicant is planning to join us for the business session, so hopefully. You know, they're able to make it for that. Um, the all ground you through this information and then we can go through any questions. And here is a street view of the property, just to draw any memories. It's in a former Chase Bank branch building there on Fort Union. I'll show a vicinity map next of kind of what it's next to, but. Just as an overview, the action requested is a conditional use permit in order to operate a dental clinic. And the applicant is Van Luin Dentistry. Here are a couple of vicinity maps, so the one on the left shows a zoomed in version. You can see the parcel in blue is the subject property. Right next to that strip mall that has like the liquor store, Kenken Cafe, um, a few other restaurants. So, so right there and then on the right hand side of the screen, you can see a more zoomed out view. So it's close to the interstate, kind of topped right behind or right west of Whole Foods. Here's a little bit more context on the property. Um, I do think that the screen behind my head is easier to see the colors on. Which I can't see, but I always notice this one is a little hard to see on, so. Direct your attention behind me. Um, the property is here in this pink color. That signifies it's part of the neighborhood commercial zone. All uses are considered conditional uses in the neighborhood commercial zone, so that's why something even as ubiquitous as a dental clinic is here before the commission. There's also kind of a subtle yellow hash mark over the top of the property that signifies it's in the city's gateway overlay zone. Which means it'll need approval from the Architectural Review Commission for any exterior or site changes, so. We've been coordinating with the applicant on that separate process, but that's the context that you need to know for tonight. Looking a little bit at the proposal, and there's a, a more comprehensive overview in your packet, in your staff report, but. The gist of it is that it's a proposal to operate a dental clinic within an existing commercial building. The applicant, again, Van Luin Dentistry, has practiced in the city since the seventies, so they've been. Been a member of our community for quite some time. They've outgrown their current space um, kind of up farther east on Fort Union Boulevard near um, Promenade or Promenade. And are just looking to relocate somewhere where they can grow a bit more. The business will consist of general dentistry treatments, dental sleep treatments, laser dentistry and surgery. Um, they expect to be open Monday through Friday, seven AM to six PM with some flexibility to do special appointments on Saturday if needed. Um, they expect to have ten employees and approximately thirty patients per day. My understanding is those thirty patients are staggered naturally, but. Assuming they're able to attend our business session, they could give more detail on that. Here is an overview of the site and some of the proposed site modifications. So again, it's an existing building, Chase Bank Branch. But they're planning to do some modifications to it naturally to convert the use. So most of those modifications will be inside, just to update the layout of the building to work for a dental clinic rather than a bank branch. Um, but a few of the ones are outside. That includes adding a few parking spaces. You can see this red area where they're going to add. A few spaces. Um, I will note, they already were compliant with their parking, but they just wanted to have a little more wiggle room for. You know, clients coming and going, so you know, not a bad thing to add that. Um, and then they also are planning to demolish the existing bank drive-through, so. Just a typical, you know, feature of any bank is that drive-through, which includes usually kind of a, an island, a concrete island directing people. They're planning to take those things out. And just replace that with a rear entrance into the, into the building. The proposed site changes do comply with city code. Um, in terms of setbacks, height, parking requirements, landscaping, that was all outlined in the packet. Um, we just had a few minor comments about adding some circulation signage of. You know, enter only and exit only to keep things moving clearly and then to also provide. Measurements for the ADA stall and the accessible route. So those were comments from our city engineer. We anticipate that they can be fully resolved before their plans are fully approved. We didn't receive any public comment on this item in advance of tonight's meeting. It's scheduled for a public hearing at our six o'clock PM session, so of course if there are. Members of the public who wish to provide comment, that will be the opportunity to do that. And staff does find that the proposed use meets all of the standards for issuing a conditional use permit. Um, I detailed out those findings again in your staff report. We're recommending approval of the application with just a few conditions. So the first is that the applicant will need to obtain that certificate of design compliance from the Architectural Review Commission. For the site and building exterior changes before making those changes. Um, the second is that the applicant will need to comply with all staff corrections, including those for ADA accessibility and site circulation. And then the third is that the applicant shall obtain a building permit for any work requiring permits. So three, three things that are. Really just requirements, but I, I think it's effective, so list them as conditions um, for kind of the documentation sake. And then I just have some model motions for you guys, so it's, it's really a kind of a short presentation tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Lucy. Um, so one of the uh. Things that is not allowed is any kind of overnight.
Correct.
And one of the things listed that they do is dental sleep treatment.
Sure, good question, yeah.
Is that overnight? Is that, I, I don't know, I don't know what that, I don't know what that means.
Perhaps Commissioner Paulson can add to that.
Immediately useful.
Really, um, what that is is conscious sedation. Usually they'll be uh, maybe an hour, two at most. For recovery that, that watch them in a space that they have, uh, just for their own convenience. They won't do that towards the end of the day. Sure. So that everybody would probably be out by six or shortly thereafter.
I just wanted, I mean, it, I don't know. Could mean, um, and then I had a question about the signage for in and out, because I mean, I, I drove through there today and, and it's a hot mess, so, okay. Um, and then the, we, it says that the final submittal, who reviews the final submittal?
Yeah, so we review it as staff when it comes back to us and then we essentially take, if the project's approved by the commission and the architectural review commission, we take those approval letters and reference what they submitted as their final plans again.
To make sure that's all incorporated.
Yeah, and then we reference it against any of the staff corrections we had from like preliminary rounds of review, so. Yes, we we vet it to make sure it does.
Okay, and then there there are, I didn't write down, so there are, I believe, ten. Ten parking spaces, correct now? I I know it meets the requirements, but in my concern was that they have ten employees.
Right.
And then they have patients that that will be there throughout the day.
They, I just pulled up in my packet to to.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I can actually flip to it here, I have it open, so we can look at it.
Yeah, thank you.
So what they're required to have is ten, today they have sixteen, and then they're planning to actually add four more to make it.
Oh, so it's gonna be twenty, okay, alright, so. It should be fine.
Of that amount, both what they currently have and what they're adding, they only are required to have one ADA stall, which they do preserve, so. I think they're relocating it to a different spot, but they do meet and actually exceed the ratios for parking.
Right, yeah, I just was, for some reason, I was thinking that the only head. Why, but, um, okay, it should be fine, because I was thinking we'd run into.
Or sixteen.
Alpha coffee thing again, where there's no.
Yeah, they still have a pretty good sense, at least in my assessment, of kind of what their clientele traffic is. Given that most times when we say to somebody, oh, you only have to have ten stalls, if they have sixteen today, they're gonna. The out of the building to take up that additional space, but they were like, no, we, you know, we know we actually exceeded today, we want to add a few more, just because we think we'll need them, so. I think they've got a pretty good handle on that.
Yeah, it sounds like it, okay, perfect. Thank you.
It did mention surgery is one of the purposes of this, do we need to define that a little bit more?
Um, we could definitely ask them for clarification, in terms of use, the only. Garg rel we would need to ensure against is that there's not after hours or overnight care. If they're doing surgery within the standard operating hours, there's not an issue with that from a use perspective. It would just be if for any reason they were saying, oh, we're gonna have it be like an an ER where people are coming in overnight, um, which. From what they've submitted, doesn't seem to be their intention. But you could definitely ask him for clarification, again, I'm hoping that they're able to.
I would just add oral surgery to that, so we.
Yeah, I think that um, was included in their narrative, and it's probably my paraphrasing, but makes that unclear.
Is there any circulation concerns inside of the parking there? It's one way all the way around, is that correct?
Yeah, that's what they're showing, and so that's why the city engineer said he need to add some signage that just clarifies that for people, so that you are going through it. But he didn't have any concerns or objections to like the existing widths of anything, it just was. Needing to make sure that that traffic pattern is obvious to anyone coming into the site.
Does it make sense to have it right hand turn only on the exit there, just to get onto Fort Union?
Um, I would just defer to him on that, I mean, we can, you could include a condition that they look into it with the city engineer. Typically, if that's something the city engineer sees as necessary, he'll include it, and so I think given that. It's a relatively slow volume of traffic, it's not like a Trader Joe's where you have a ton of people coming and going all at once. I think most likely that's fine, that would a right in, right out, but.
Now, are there any, uh, there, I don't think there are on that stretch of road, any restrictions on right or left, right?
Coming out of that liquor store, that liquor store parking lot, there is nothing that says left or no lane, so.
Which I I feel like with a single lane, it might make more sense, but I mean, volume wise, I think that also makes a lot of sense. Just because it takes so long to go across that.
Having used that thing for years and using the driveways, never had any problem going right or left out of that driveway.
Yeah, we think it'll be, you know, represents a good like free investment in the site, I think it's remained vacant for a couple of years at least. And it's been kept in good condition, which is great, but it's such an area of interest to the city with our form based code moving along and. Um, definitely seems like a, from a staff perspective, a great effort to kind of revitalize that site, so. Guys, awesome.
Actually, I have one other question.
Of course, yes, please.
In what you just said about the restriction from seven thirty to six.
Yes.
It sounded like from six to seven AM, you really didn't want them on the property?
They proposed operating hours of seven to six, our code doesn't specifically say it has to be that. Um, what it says is it can't be after hours, which we traditionally define as, I think, after seven PM, it's kind of our threshold.
Once in a great while in a dental practice you run into somebody you've got to see that night, it may not be in a convenient time.
Sure.
That fall within that, would that be a problem if that happened, I say, six times a year?
Um, I think technically speaking, it would, I mean, I'm not sure if anyone would really. Candace will be like, know that that's taking place, but it does specifically say no after hours treatment, so. We would expect them to keep their business uses within that, you know.
Would it be?
Eleven hour window.
Possible to put that in, that on on.
Yeah.
On occasion that that could happen, because in the dental practices it just happens.
Um, you know, you actually couldn't make a condition allowing it because the code specifically doesn't allow it, so.
Just kind of look the other way.
You could make a condition reiterating what the code says, but it's not in our purview to make conditions that conflict with the code.
Can we go back to the drawing for a second?
Yeah, of course. Let me get my.
I bet you can guess where I'm headed, but for the master plan.
Sure, yeah.
What what can we ask of them reasonably in terms of trying to improve that particular section of the Fort Union area?
So it's not within our purview to require frontage improvements unless the site is slowly developing. So given that the primary structure is remaining, there's really no significant modifications to it, it wouldn't be. In staff's purview to require them to make those changes. We did um, review this proposal against the Fort Union area master plan, and that's why we required them to keep the front entrance. Originally, they were planning, you could get me closer, they wanted to take out this front entrance and only use a rear entrance. But in that master plan, it does require a street facing entrance, so things like that that are about the building's design. We can require and have, but frontage improvements like a wider sidewalk, a bike lane, wouldn't be triggered by this.
Are they going to do anything um, significant to your knowledge, I couldn't tell from what I read. To effectively change any of the landscaping or or want to do anything?
Not really, the blue area shown on the park strip is changing that to um, their species, low water species, which. It's consistent with the city's landscaping direction, and then they show, you know, carving out a little bit of this front lawn for additional parking. But it does still meet the landscaping requirements, so um, again, nothing that they're proposing here would. Be an appropriate trigger to require frontage changes.
So as my follow up then, is there an opportunity to partner with them in some form? Reasonably from a financial standpoint, for common heights to contribute a little bit to the effort. To move us towards that, if they're gonna make some rearrangements and obviously zero escape is great, uh, it's kind of the the, you know. Hope to strip kind of an attitude, but um. And administratively, I would just ask if you guys see an opportunity to work with them, as kind of behind the scenes, things are evolving, to say, listen. We might be able to work something out if you're considering a wider sidewalk, would you, would you consider this? And and if it doesn't look like it, it's too rich for our blood, forget it, we walk away, but. I I I always love giving business owners the opportunity to see what we were hoping for. And obviously, like you said, we can't, we're not forcing compliance because it's not a full redesign, but.
Typically, we approach the property orders, um, if we have a grant project or a grant application for a certain frontage, so with the example of. The opposite side of Fort Union, kind of between those two town hall projects. We, when we submitted the grant application to um, the state. For that money, we were able to approach each property owner and say, would you support this, would you be willing to work with us on this? Um, so certainly if that were to be a future project, we would anticipate coordinating with them very closely, but. At this time, we did not have any funding available to do that stretch, so I think it would be a great opportunity down the road. If something comes together, but we don't have anything right now that's active.
I wish we had something just from a forethought standpoint, because we we have discussed in here that when people start making any. Appreciable changes to something, that there is a window where they're in the mode of trying to work with us and for us to work with them. And I realize that, you know, a grant is, that's happening in another silo. I would love for us to have a way for this, because this is not the last time this is gonna come up, and. I I would love for us to have a more flexible option, and if this needs to be a city council thing, I.
Yeah.
Happy to suggest that through those channels to make sure there's a way, and I appreciate that it's like, well, there's not a mechanism right now. And if that's the best way to address it, I'm.
Yeah, I think it is, you're talking about having basically funding just kind of ready, that would be a council initiative that they would. Prioritize in their budgeting process against all the other funding needs in the city and say, yeah, we want, you know, this. Whatever, Fort Union slush fund available for when this redevelopment tech stuff happens, so that would be initiated at the council level and then carried out. You know, administratively.
That helps a ton, that's what I was looking for. Also, do we have any concerns about just in terms of uh. So is this enough of a uh. Redesign that that, I mean, there are thresholds with ADA compliance. Um, and I, in terms of the model motion, are, I I would love to see as specific as possible in terms of what. Level of ADA compliance, you know, I mean, new construction is a different, you know, and and whether it's just ramps or. Wits or bathroom accessibility or um, wits of doorways, I mean, there's, there's layers to this, so.
Sure, I would actually recommend leaving it open and just leaving it as it's worded with compliant with all staff corrections.
Okay.
Because that gives us an opportunity to reference any corrections from the engineering department as well as the building department. In terms of the engineering department, what they're looking for is this hash area showing how somebody from the ADA stall will access the building. So their correction was you need to provide widths and specifications for what that is, I'm guessing that also the grade of what that area is. Um, and then certainly with their tenant improvement, where they pull a building permit for that, our building official will say, these are the things you're requiring to upgrade for restrooms. Um, so I would recommend re- leaving it broad to allow for that.
Okay, and then also for ingress and egress or uh, fire suppression. Um, and whether there's any internal upgrades to fire suppression system, if it is, if it wants internal. Or if it's external uh, to, you know, making sure that I would just make sure to flag that our, our unified folks. Plus this in terms of the ability to get an engine in and out, or that they can, they're comfortable that the distance from the street is. Reasonable, that they're not worried about getting into the.
So they have to sign off on the business license, so that's the point where UFA will look at it. And either say you need to make modifications to your fire suppression or it meets it. Um, so that, yeah, that'll be taken care of through the business license, which you could reiterate a condition about getting a business license, but. It's kind of one of those same things where I have to do it, it's just a matter of, do you want to reiterate it or not?
And they inspect that annually, is that correct?
I believe they do when it's renewed, I I don't do the business licenses, but just anecdotally, I don't know.
That's a good question, I don't, they have their their procedures they follow and you know, you get the the go ahead from them, I don't know what it looks like day to day, but. I I believe specifically in common heights, each year, when you do renew that, UFA comes out, inspects your fire suppression systems and.
Yeah.
They also. They'll also look at the building permit, kind of another layer there, if they weren't making any changes to the site. UFA would still go out just to sign off on the business license, they'll be doing that, but also. UFA will be included on the review of their building permit to look at anything that they need to. You know, show in the plans to make sure it gets built in reality.
And the last thing, uh, the lighting, they're obviously taking out that one pole.
Yep.
Which that um. Uh, I haven't seen it at night, so I mean, with our, with our desire to try to decrease our, you know, kind of moving towards dark skies. Um, are we doing everything that can be done, or is there more that we could ask of them? In terms of cutoff lighting to, first of all, keep people safe in their parking lot after hours, but second of all. To be sensitive to the adjoining neighbors, because I mean, if there's an improvement. For lighting, if it's been the same lighting that's been there since the eighties, there are better options that this would be the time to ask for that.
My opinion would be that their removal of that is the most reasonable thing to do for mitigation of any negative impacts of the business. Um, you could have a perception perhaps that leaving that pole would cause glare or cause the site to be overly bright, so. My assessment of that is that by removing that, they're more fully complying. Um, if a condition were to be added for additional lighting, it would need to be very directly tied to a fact about. How the lighting on site is lacking or um, needs to be modified, which I don't see.
Yeah, I was just asking if you guys said, if you, if you assessed it or.
Yes, so that we're removing the one, if they were to propose a new lighting, all a new lighting has to comply with. Today's outdoor lighting standards, so that's kind of, you know, if there's other lights elsewhere, they may be not conforming, but again, this, this is more of a tenant improvement than it is a. Brand new project, so our ability to go in and say, I know you're not touching that light, but we got you to go fix it. We, we're on empty ground there, but if as they propose new work, new lighting, that's a policy to come to compliance.
And I think that's their only like, like pole, I want to say, I mean, I'm sure they have lighting on the building. But I think that's the only pre standing one, and they obviously are removing it to get that concrete island out of there. Um, but I think that, yeah, it it'll bring it more in compliance with their ordinance.
It looks like they have two additional.
Oh, do they? Kind of hard to tell. Um, so, I mean, you could look into it, again, I don't think it's a drastic enough change to require them to bring the whole site into conformity. I tend to think if it's getting more conforming, then that's kind of what we need to require for a remodel, but.
That would be part of the arc review, right?
Yeah, the arc will look at outdoor lighting as well, specifically if they're proposing any new lighting, um. Has to meet the ordinance, but the art sometimes will have design suggestions for how that lighting should be done.
I always like the opportunity for us to communicate to a business owner that kind of best practices, even if it's, if we're not gonna require you to. You know, do this stuff, but we are as a city moving in this direction, so as you're making deciding decisions. I think there are some, there are businesses, I mean, speaking as a business owner, I want to be a good corporate citizen, and. Especially if I'm contemplating that and I'm, it's sixes and I realize I have the opportunity to do it there, then, I mean, uh. I realize that that's not necessarily, um, really the the purview of the planning commission, I would just ask administratively as you interact with them. That there are chances to make sure that, well, here's, here's the Fort Union master plan, here's our, here's our lighting. Guidelines and you're not doing anything that's gonna require us to mandate you to do anything, it's not a substantial enough project, but.
Yeah.
They've been very receptive to their credit, um, for sure, with anything we have brought up, like with the entrance, we were like, hey. You know, because it's on Fort Union, there's this master plan, and this is what it says, and they've been very, you know, receptive to making those changes, which is great.
Great, does look like there's a light pole kind of right above the north arrow along that side yard.
Yeah.
Google street view, there is already a shield.
Was it really?
On the north end of that light, to, I presumably to mitigate the the light impact to the neighborhood behind it.
That's awesome.
And then there are two light poles in front of the building that don't have the shields, but I think the building blocks the light trespassing. And then the other one has a shield as well, but that will be removed.
And did they, was there any appreciable change in signage?
They haven't shown any signage yet, that'll be included with the arcs, the middle if they do it, um, but they haven't included any at this level. Which sometimes also people will come back with the signage kind of separated out, so.
Yeah.
We'll see how they want to move forward there, but nothing so far.
Thanks for all your answers.
Yeah. Yeah, they've done a good job giving us a lot of information, so that's very much appreciated.
Commissioner Ebler, what are you seeing that we're not?
I mean, I I think it's a pretty relatively straightforward application, so I don't have a lot to add, I think your guys covered it, I don't want to beat the dead horse.
Sounds good, anything else, any other questions or clarifications?
Well, I I like your idea about um, having some sway in what the ultimate. Outcome is, our purview is pretty limited, but it's nice, you know, and I'm wondering if when we make a motion, if we can say something like. We approve or recommend approval of this project and would encourage coordination with whoever to. Implement some of these ideas so we're consistent with the overall master plan.
To though, I mean, if they make changes, they have to adhere to.
For sure, when you're talking some of the recommendations, hey, it'd be, it'd be nice if we, you know, could work, you know, they're a community oriented business, work together. I don't recommend that that be incorporated into a formal motion, we could take it as direction for sure, and then, you know. Report that on to the council, say, hey, there's some interest in this, you know, you can all do that as well. For the motion itself, I I would recommend staying specifically with the.
That's fine, discussion, I think. Once we make the motion, it needs to be determined in the motion, I want to make sure that it's very clear what they must do and what they must not do. And once we have the motion, we're discussing. We're discussing what they must and must not. If we're, once we're deliberating. I mean, pointing out that, well, we obviously cannot require someone to do blah, blah, blah. I I I think that's your purview as a. Commissioner, uh, but pointing out that we we do not. We're not going to require them, you know. I think that would be, in my opinion, that would be when we're discussing. And deliberating as a commission wants to make the motion um. If you do decide to discuss at that point, let's make sure that we're very clear um. What is and is not required. I think that just in terms of best practices and exposure for the city. Was.
Do we want to pull up?
We also run the risk of just going afoul of of our of our duties on once you start adding in conditions that kind of run outside. The kind of statutory guidance of what we can and cannot attach to something.
Right, and I'm I'm sympathetic to that, totally. I just think as a planning commission, if we see something that is not seen by another body. How do we communicate that in a way that it might be implemented at some?
It it it's hard. It's hard because like in a lot, in a lot of ways, a a lot of, a lot of the the statutory guidance just ties our hands and we we just. There's a ton of things that a lot of these applications I would have liked to tag on, but it's like ultimately. You know, the the duties and obligations that that we get limited to are 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 spelled out and and we we kind of have to. Stay within those those uh those lines, otherwise, you know, fine, we can vote on it, they they can, and then they can appeal it and. And then our 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 motion meant nothing.
That's something that um definitely kind of made recommendations, uh, not during an active motion, but just more. The chair mentioned during deliberation saying that we. We hope the applicant would be open to coordinating with the city on continued master plan compliance, things like that. I would just. Echo, um, be very cautious of including any verbiage like that during the actual motion, because that's not within the purview of a conditional use permit.
Yeah, one one thing that's relevant to this, um, I think in late October, maybe November, the council's going to invite. The chair of each committee and commission in the city to to a council work session. Maybe a good chance to, you know. If you're there, Commissioner Mills, to pass those things along. Hey, as a commission, you know, we have our powers and duties. Here's some other things we see and we want to interact with and.
Yeah.
You know, if if you want to schedule five, 10 minutes in an upcoming work session to. Brainstorm on on what the commission wants to prepare for that presentation to the council, that that could be appropriate.
That'd be great.
That might be a good place.
Down for that. I would love to walk into that meeting in arms with. The ability to kind of represent what we're feeling as a body.
Sure. And I'm not at all arguing that we.
Yeah.
Broaden our purview at all.
Right.
But I just do think that we have a responsibility to kind of be the eyes and ears and and have our recommendations. To affect planning. And we might see something that is not seen by someone else. It would be nice to have a mechanism to convey that.
Oh, I I would I would love if our if our. Footprint was larger and we could be more prescriptive in some of the conditions, especially something like, you know, you know, for buildings and stuff like that, some of the materials we. But Utah just doesn't allow it.
Well, it's a it's an opportunity to to communicate to the public in.
Yeah.
The microphone, uh, so that those who may feel that um. This body is arbitrary and is being pushed by one group or another, it's the chance for us to. Gently communicate process a little bit, so when that makes. Staff's life better, when people understand that this is not. Uh, meant to be arbitrary or favoring one group over another, so.
What opportunity do we have as a city to implement the master plan outside of? Any new developments? I mean, something like this where this is a zone, you know, overlay.
Yeah.
How do we implement this or encourage implementation for the gateway master plan here without?
Full redevelopment?
Full redevelopment, because I mean. Is it title change that we can implement that with? Is it? Cause we have grandfather clauses that go into place, but we're going to be at a stalemate for a long time.
Yeah.
Put something in place for that.
Two, I mean, maybe three things there. First thing, frankly, I just don't always take place till it redevelops, and that's just kind of the reality for a lot of it. Second thing is with any part of the proposal, even if it's not a full redevelopment, if that part. Has a reference in the design guidelines or the area master plan, we can require it. So again, the example there is like the entrance, right? They're not completely rebuilding the building, but what they're proposing, even just this small part of it. Is talked about in these plans, and so we can require them to adhere to it. Um, we just can't require them to bring the full thing up to it um. Unless they're making those changes. But then the other opportunity is anytime there's funding available. From the city, whether it's through the grant or through appropriation by the council to then proactively. Go to these properties and say, we're interested in doing this type of a project. Can you partner with us?
Does this have to go through the A R C?
Yes.
So if that going through the A R C doesn't be A R C, have the whole be held accountable to our master plan and the design requirements in the master plan?
That's what's covered in here is that any of those changes will go to them. Um, and that's why we've told them. Even farther back at the planning commission point, you know, you've got to move that entrance or you've got to leave that entrance so it's accessible. You're going to have to give us renderings of signage and any exterior changes. Um, so again, anything that they are choosing to change has to meet the standards. It's just not in our ability to say. Even though you're not changing these other things, you also need to bring them up to compliance.
With, yeah, with conditional use, though, because it is a conditional use approval. I I feel like that is a perfect opportunity for us to be able to put that in the place where. This is the master plan, this is where we're looking at, we're changing use from a conditional.
It has to be tied to a negative impact of the property. So the condition can't just be wanting it to. Better match an area master plan. It would have to be, there's a negative impact, like there's dogs barking on the property. A condition we can impose is hours of operation or better screening or buffering, but it can't be. Um, it has it has to be tied to a specific condition of the property that would need to be mitigated through a condition.
There's also a um. Uh, in kind of land use law and and planning law history. Any requirement that the city makes has to be roughly proportional. Um, to the impact of of whatever use you're considering. So a brand new complete redevelopment from one old house into, you know. Twenty live work mixed use units, that has more of an impact, asking for sidewalk dedication and. Bike lanes and improvements, there's proportionality there. In the case of, hey, a bank moved out and a dentist is moving in, that you fall short of the bar to say, well, you know, the impact of that warrants. Ten feet of right of way dedication and you have to do this and and we're cities, if you ask too much and it's not proportional to the impact of the change. That's called an exaction, which is the city. Um, requiring or or doing something without compensation and and that's where you see. These cases overturn all the time. So we have to be mindful of that, which is why we're, you know, presenting it that way tonight.
Are are there impact fees associated with a redevelopment like or a minimal T I redevelopment like this?
Only if the impact is different than what it was before. So going from one house to a, you know, a company complex, yes, there's going to be some impact fees. Going from a bank to a dentist office, probably not.
Just considered commercial to commercial, so there has to change. It's the same as if you had um. A house and you knocked it down and rebuilt a house, you wouldn't have a new impact fee because there's no change in impact. With that staying the same.
Well, plumbing and electrical appreciably change.
Yeah.
How substantial?
Uh, quite a.
Well, it'll be covered by building code. So all the new work on the inside has to meet twenty twenty three or twenty twenty one building code.
And and I, what I was going to speak to on that is there are very specific triggers within the existing building code, the percent of the. Property that is remodeled substantially can trigger, for instance, energy code requirements in the perimeter of the building. So that that really does become a. A a permitting, you know, that should be something our building official should be watching like hawk, making sure that. We're compliant with all of those existing building codes. So. Even if it's not like a structural change, right? Like just taking off the driveway isn't, you know, it's not a sub- a sub- a substantial remodel. It's a. Um, it's like a the first class of alterations or second, I think, right? Um, if you're going to change a mechanical unit like for like, that'd be the first type of alteration. Uh, so everything is is done based on the amount of change, and if you're below a very prescriptive threshold. You know, you don't have to bring everything up to code. The same thing is true for these these uh energy issues for and and for all the other things like that. Now, the the requirements for, you know, mad gases, I don't know if they call them that in dental as well. But all these different things that'll come in that do require a lot of scrutiny. Um, and I'm not sure where the health department comes in all this dental.
Has to find a holder of this license and.
Yeah, so that, I don't think that's a heavy review process for this type of facility.
Oh, not typically.
But yeah, there, I mean, there's a, there are other. Check or hurdles to to cross as far as the the modification. I cannot think of something that would trigger a site lighting uh review, though.
Right.
So that that the arc committee will.
Do you want to clarify from staff standpoint? We we want to implement a four union plan as much as anybody. So if there were a a a reasonable, defensible reason, you know. Uh, justification in code to do that, we'd be presenting that with findings for why we're requiring that and and that we talked about. It's just this, this is. A change of reviews in existing building. We don't hit that threshold.
Well, and and more so what I would be thinking is that coordination with the council. Is what kind of CRAs or RDAs can we put into place to be able to then say, you know what, we want to incentivize you, we're going to match, you know, to.
Sure.
You know, ten thousand dollars, it's the city to be able to enhance this, just because.
Yeah, that'd be great.
As as a business owner, you know, an extra ten thousand dollars for a hundred thousand dollar T I product, which this is going to be probably. Half a million to a million dollar T I product for these guys. You know, it 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 makes a difference when you have somebody that's also helping that out. So that's where. I don't think we have any RDAs right now. I think the only CRA that we have is the Hillside Plaza. Um, so I don't know if there's any opportunity for us to create an R V A just to. Incentivize local business owners, developers, you know, whoever that is to. Go that extra mile to meet the needs of our master plan or else the master plan is just going to come and go.
It takes a lot longer if you don't have that, yeah.
E- exactly. So if there's any type of incentives that we can start promoting within the council and start evaluating within our budget, I think that could be super advantageous.
With the Hillside Plaza area, it does include part of Fort Union going down. A little bit westward from Hillside Plaza. So it'll be interesting to see how that catalyzes some redevelopment. Obviously, the city only purchased that one first hole, but given that that kind of entire intersection has been put in that redevelopment area. It'll be interesting to see how that catalyzes some different types of development and, yeah, maybe there's opportunities to expand it. That would be. A different circumstance altogether.
Are we evaluating any? Tip on that project to then be able to then expand and impact the rest of the community?
Long term, yes. So so they created a project area at Hillside Plaza, community reinvestment area in order to be able to acquire the property. Typically, um, when you create a reinvestment area, you include other taxing entities. And then as the property grows and changes and redevelops. Theoretically, the property value goes up as well. And what the participation by the taxing entities allows is that. As the property value goes up, the tax revenue goes up, instead of those revenues just being dispersed citywide or back to um, you know, the state. A a portion of that increase in revenue is earmarked and kept on that site, which goes into a fund that can be used to reinvest in the site, which is what Commissioner Steinman is talking about. That process of negotiating and getting all the taxing entities on board is is the most challenging obstacle, of course. You know, you'll ever run through, especially now, every taxing entity is looking for. For different things in order to participate. So the long range plan for Hillside Plaza is to get taxing entities on board. Typically, the county and school district will want to see a plan first and they'll want to know. Hey, why can't you do this without us um giving you some of the tax revenue for the next twenty five years? You know, what what do you, what is it about this tax revenue that makes this project, you know, the tax revenue basically makes a break the project? So we have to do that still on Hillside Plaza, and then we have direction to do the same thing on the gravel pit area from the council as well. Those are the two kind of in progress right now.
Great. That should potentially motivate. You know, if we can incorporate that and potentially expand that to the gateway.
Yeah.
Overlay, I think that could be incredibly interesting. Um, I know Mill Creek has seen success in that Clearfield scene. Success in that Ogden as well, so.
So just another comment on that. I mean, ju- given that the general plan is up for renewal or being worked on. There's probably some opportunities to insert language into the general plan to provide guidance on some of these issues.
Absolutely, yeah. Probably towards the end of the year, that a draft of the general plan will be. Coming to the planning commission to start that deliberation process. So you'll be seeing that in the near future.
Certainly in the form-based code, if you guys are.
Right.
And we'll be coming back. Uh, to the commission, we anticipate on October fourth with the full draft for you to read, so.
I I I mean, that was just kind of when I was listening to this, it's like, you know, that the master plans are good drill downs, but if if there's general guidance within the general plan, the the plan still has to comply with it.
Yeah.
So so there is opportunity there to kind of address some of these things in more of a broader context.
Yeah, typically you see a recommendation in the general plan.
Right.
At the most broad level, that carries down to maybe an area plan or a master plan. Which then hopefully carries down to ordinance or policy, which is enforceable and has teeth and can be implemented and funded and budgeted for.
I'll just note that the, putting the nice things about the form-based code and hope you you notice this in the draft that you'll be receiving is that it gives a little bit. More specificity about what the triggers are for when things can be required. Because as is, we do have to just very much try to toe the line of proportionality. Um, but some of the draft language in the form-based code says if it's this much of a percentage of change, some of the things that Commissioner Chapel is talking about it, it provides that for the land use. Um, category of things, which I think will be really helpful. So excited to bring that back.
Well, thank you, staff, for tolerating a much lengthier discussion for very simplistic business item that allowed us to kind of go a lot of different places, I think. All of us benefit from, and I think the public frankly will too. So.
Yeah.
Um, I would just encourage all of us to review the information that we have thus far on form-based code and um. Uh, there is information in our minutes, so if you can direct Commissioner Paulson a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
The, and I can't remember which months we had the last iteration and obviously it will be edited, but just so that you can walk in a little bit. Uh, uh, up to speed or if you want it, whatever interface.
I can send you the zoom recording of it even if you want to just listen to the presentations on the form-based code project. I think that would be really helpful context for when that comes back.
Would you please?
Yes, I will. I'll make a note.
Okay, um, we're we're at five fifty four um.
Quick item, if if you'll understand me for two minutes. Um, I don't know if anyone was listening to the council meeting last night, but. There's a lot of background and context we'll get into at the next meeting, but um they imposed a moratorium on. Uh, permits for sport courts in residential areas. Um, this was driven a lot by concerns surrounding a a a small handful of pickleball courts that were being built in backyards and. The potential negative impacts that those have on neighborhoods and the concern that there's nothing specifically in ordinance right now. To address some of those concerns. So the council voted to impose a moratorium, which means. Um, no sport courts over five hundred square feet can be approved for a maximum of six months. And that starts the clock for us to now get an ordinance in place. So we've been given direction to get an ordinance, a very, you know. An ordinance that's tailored specifically towards sport courts and and the impacts and the the concerns we've heard. Through planning commission and city council and then adopt it as quickly as possible. We have six months, the council would prefer not to take six months. So we're getting to work with that very quickly, but you'll see a sport court ordinance. Uh, probably at the next meeting or or in two meetings, and that's the basis for that.
The, I would, I would encourage all of you, there's a um, not this last business meeting, but the previous business meeting. In the general comment period, there were like a four or five fairly educated residents that expressed this, and that's really what lit the fire with this. And it describes an ordinance uh that's been written by Park City. And I just, if you can do that little bit of homework, I think you'll come to the discussion with staff, kind of knowing where the city council is coming from. And then I think it'll make us work a little faster. I think. If you could send us a date, and that might be another one, we're sending a link. Um, it it's really, you can fast forward, but there's about a maybe a. Fifteen minute segment where you just hear the residents and. I'm going to stay agnostic as to what my feelings are about the tone and the. Uh, legalities of what they said or didn't said, but it it wasn't one person, it was a number and the city council was. Aware and it's going to push back to us, so we need to be ready.
Are we looking to adopt this in the ordinance to what Park City has?
Not necessarily. No, no, no. I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that there is that there is an ordinance and that was referenced in the discussion. And so just in terms of uh precedent in our, the city, I, we are not Park City for sure. And that there may be pieces out there we like, pieces we don't, and staff is going to weigh that out for us.
We had a presentation to council last night. If if it's helpful to the commission, because this is kind of being fast tracked. I can send those slides to the creation.
That would be great.
See what we presented.
Perfect. Okay, we uh are five fifty seven now. Uh, Hall, and I move to be adjourned.
Second.
A a motion of second, all those in favor?
Hi, hi.